Mr. Reba, roll call.
Mr. Benomo.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Early.
Here.
Mr. John.
Present.
Mr. Mahalik.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Ms. Shannon.
Here.
Announcement of executive sessions held as follows: September 15, 2015 on personnel; September 24, 2015, personnel and acquisition of property. Public announcements and recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. We do have a special recognition this evening, and Mr. Donati, if you would come forward, please. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, the Hazelton Area School District would like to recognize Ms. Nicole Meckus, a middle school social studies teacher at Freeland Elementary Middle School for accomplishments inside and outside the classroom, as well as inside the school district, as well as throughout Pennsylvania. Ms. Meckus is also being recognized by the Pennsylvania Alliance for Geographic Education as their quarterly teacher spotlight. She's currently being featured on their website, PAGOalliance.org. The Pennsylvania Alliance for Geography Education works in conjunction with National Geographic Education Foundation to promote geographic literacy in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. The inspiration behind the Alliance movement was to develop a grassroots organization of professional geographers and teachers to encourage both geographic skills and appreciation, as well as inspire people to care about the planet. To close, I would like to thank Ms. Meckus and congratulate her for providing extraordinary efforts to promote and foster geographic literacy and spatial thinking in the classroom, as well as other educational settings across Pennsylvania. Ms. Meckus, if you'd come forward at this time?
Mr. Chapman, may I just add that it's this type of recognition that brings about state notoriety and a positive pat on the back for Hazelton Area School District, and this is just one of many things that, fine things, that happen with our staff, professional staff, throughout the school year, and it's our hope to celebrate more and more of these in the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. That's it, though? Okay. At this time, I want to make the announcement that Items 16 and 41 will be taken off the agenda for this evening. Items 16 and 41. Public comment directed to the board on agenda items only. Anyone tonight, Mr. Benomo?
Donna Gold. God. Gold. Go ahead.
Please state your name and address and the agenda item you'll be talking about.
Okay, my name is Donna Todd. My address is 571 Grant Street in Hazelton, Pennsylvania. I would like to talk about agenda items 57 and 58. I also am the representative for the International Union of Security, Police, and Fire Professionals of America Local 506. Just for your consideration, the hiring of two part-time school police officers, one for alternative ed, the other one for events. Up until last year, our security officers always worked alternate ed. It was held at Hazelton Area Career Center, and Mrs. SCOTEC ran the program, and I believe we worked that without incident. And also, events, we always are available for working events. For your consideration, you can get two part-time security officers plus $1.90 for one police officer. So, the police officer gets $18.54; two security officers would cost you $20.44 an hour, and that's only a difference of $1.90. So, just for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Redwinski.
Teresa Redwinski, Butler Drive-In Drums, president of the Hazelton Area Education Support Professionals. I just wondered if you have a copy on Item 90, the home and school visitor general secretary job description? I have not had the opportunity to review that, so I'd ask that you possibly put a hold on that until next meeting, so we have an opportunity to review it and discuss it.
Ms. Redwinski, I believe the only thing that changed on it, because I did help out with that, was the updating of the clearances that are now required. That job description was board-approved in, don't hold me to this, but 2012 or 2013 when that position was last filled, and we basically just updated it with the required clearances.
So, that's the only change?
I believe so, yes.
And that would require her to collect all that information? That's where all our clearances for the entire school district would go to?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it. All right, then, at this time, before we go any further, Dr. Childs would like to make a statement?
Yes, this is an apology, addressed to Ms. Fulton, I believe a student at the STEM School, and to the staff and students at the Castle. Those who've been around for a while know that I'm not the greatest extemporaneous speaker in the world. I fumbled over words, and I made a big boo-boo when I spoke to the newspaper about the Castle being the worst school in the district. I think Yogi Bear would have said something like, "Don't listen to what I say, listen to what I mean." But the situation is that I consider the Castle a very, very difficult school to administer and to teach in, and I have all the respect in the world for people who work at the Castle. But the word "difficult" should have replaced the word "worst," not, and when I say that, I also mean that we, as a board, need to take a very close look at the Castle. It's demographics, the fact that many of the students don't have the facilities at home that students in other buildings have. But I didn't make a big boo-boo, and I'm sorry. I apologize for the use of the word "worst." That was an absolutely incorrect word.
Thank you, Dr. Childs. I'm sure everybody that just heard you appreciated those thoughts. At this time, approve the board meeting minutes. Regular board meeting, August 27, 2015; special board meeting, September 15.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Approve treasurer's report for August 2015.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Reba?
All in favor of approving the treasurer's report, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion pass.
At this time, I'll turn the program over to Dr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Curriculum and instruction, approve items 1 through 4 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 1 through 4, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion pass.
Items 5 through 12 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Can somebody please clarify for me the difference between number 5 and number 27, which we've come up against later?
Dr. Childs, I know that number 5 is a scholarship program through, obviously it says so, through which our professional faculty can take classes through Alvernia at a reduced discounted rate. I would have to look into 27, Dr. Childs, I'm sorry.
Yeah, because I don't know what 27 is in relation to.
Yeah, it does look like it could be the same motion. I'm sorry to have to look into that. We can certainly table that until I get more information, if that's your desire.
And once again, on number 6, I will voice my hope that we can leave it open, that there, at some point in time, is some service and kind that the Bloomsburg University faculty can afford this district, as a remuneration, lack of better word, for the free education we provide their students. You know, I agree that the students provide something for us, too, but at the same time, looking at their, at the potential for getting something back for this in the future and not in the form of money, I'm talking in the form of services.
I second that. I mean, it's a discussion that's been going on for some time, not only related to Bloomsburg University, but all universities that place student teachers. I mean, these students spend a lot of money, and really, the support, the experience, the training is coming from our staff and our administrators. So, yeah, I'm certainly not saying we don't want to take student teachers, because, you know, I think it's valuable for everyone, but, I mean, there should be something more than, you know, a thank you, because those kids are paying a lot more than a thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 5 through 12, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Approve items 13 through 20 with one motion, with the exception of number 16.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, just a comment on number 14, that the Boy Scouts are surely a worthwhile project, and do we have audience members here for that, for number 14?
Yes, my name is Ryan. How much do you share with your group? And I'm a big chairperson for SHU-63 on behalf of the HHS district to help our enrolled and to help teach kids, boys in our district, character-building skills, things like that, and those work groups that allow our recruiters into the building, into different buildings to be able to solicit for potential scouts, and also our district executive, who is employed by Boy Scouts, would be doing what are called, pardon me, Boy Talks, where they talk to individual groups of scouts, potential scouts who seem to be involved in scout. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Yes. On number 17, again, I'm delighted with the program that's being offered. I am very anxious to make sure that we go forth with the, forward with the distribution of guidance counselors, in terms of just trying to get even the basics done at this point in time. I would point out that I believe we have two guidance counselors at the STEM School, 500 students, and at the, at Heights Terrace right now, you have 1,100 students with quite a significant demographic situation, and lots and lots of problems, and we have one guidance counselor for 1,100 students there, and I hope that's going to be rectified. Also, on number 19, comprehensive plan? Are we talking about the school districts, you know, what we're going to do in the future type of thing? Is that?
Right. We, for the board's benefit, we are responsible now for, we are Phase II schools, so it's now our opportunity to revise our comprehensive plan. Mr. Donati and myself, and to great except Mr. Manfredi and Ms. Januzzi, have been working on the plan and working with teams of teachers to complete the plan. Dr. Childs, we must have that plan completed and up for public review by the end of October, so the board will see it prior to that, but this is a mandatory step. It used to be strategic planning, it's now been renamed to comprehensive planning.
Okay, that's what it was.
And just one bit, one more bit of information. We are trying to make this a meaningful, productive, very alive type of document that will drive the district moving forward in the next three years.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Yeah, just for a point of clarification, Mr., or Dr. Butler, this is obviously taking place after the workday, and that's why there's that rate of pay.
Correct. Ms. Mahalik, yes.
Anything else? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 13 through 20, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Okay, before Dr. Butler reads 29 through, 21 through 29, I need somebody, if they would make a motion to table number 27.
I'll make the motion as table number 27.
And a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Reba?
Motion to table, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion passes.
Dr. Butler?
Approve items 21 through 29 with the, with one motion, with the exception of number 27.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 21 to 29, excluding 27, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion pass.
Approve items 30 through 37 with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 30 to 37, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion pass.
Special education is held on alternative education. Approve items 38 through 42 with one motion, with the exception of number 41.
So move.
I'll second.
Questions or comments?
I just have one quick comment, and it's not on the agenda any longer, however, I do want to thank, because we have some representatives of a group here that has been very active in helping us become more and more aware of what dyslexia is and how we can best help our students who, you know, who may have this condition. I can tell you, I've been in special ed a lot of years now, and I learned stuff for these, from this group that I didn't know, and their approach is a very cooperative manner with us, Dr. Butler. You've met with them, I know Mr. Manfredi has, and Mr. Donati, you know, it's not adversarial, it's not pressing, it's just, hey, let's do what's best for these kids, because there's a lot of kids out there besides ones that maybe they even have a personal affiliation with. So I thank them for their approach with us, their patience with us, and I hope they, and I know they realize that we're doing everything we can, spearheaded by Mr. Manfredi, to do the very best for their, for their children and all children.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Reba?
Numbers 38 through 42, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Ice habit motion pass.
May I make one comment? I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to butt in after number 37, but I couldn't help but notice the disproportionate number of activities, and very exciting activities, I might say, for our gifted students, our students at the STEM School and so forth, a very disproportionate number in our list down to number 37. You know, you have a Ms. Kane coming in and talking about being smarter than social media, you have Ms. Keller coming in and talking about domestic violence. All this is at the HIAS. What about the rest of our students? What's happening to the rest of them? Why aren't they involved in these same types of activities? I would think they would be, I marked here beside number 33, I would think that would be. that would be excellent for every student in the district at this point in time, and yet it's, and yet it's confined to the STEM School, and I don't understand that. I'm hoping that the high school and other schools in the district can manage to, to come through with similar programs, similar program proposals.
Anything else?
Yeah. Okay, nutrition, number forty-three, recommend board approve the cafeteria transfers, new hires listed below. These are all open positions, rate is based on the HA/ESPA contract.
We need a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Number forty-three, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Transportation, approve items forty-four through forty-five with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Number forty-four and forty-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Technology, approve items forty-six, forty-seven with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Mr. Reba, I would appreciate if you would describe the changes in number forty-six?
The, this position actually was, as you may remember, moved from the non-classified group into the union, support group union, so we did draft up a job description and I met with the union. The main difference is it allows the print shop technician to work now that he's in the union in the warehouse during the summer months.
I think that was a very good move, Mr. Reba.
Any other questions or comments on those two? Mr. Reba.
Numbers forty-six and forty-seven, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Student activities, athletics, extracurricular, approve items forty-eight through fifty with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments? Mr. Reba.
Forty-eight through fifty, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Security, approve items fifty-one through fifty-nine with one motion.
So move. Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a question on number fifty-eight. I understand fifty-seven, but is number fifty-eight because none of our current officers want to do this?
Sometimes we do have the ground, there are some giving officers who are, you know, other grounds that I, you know, we are, we do have the ground.
So, so this person, okay, so this person would get the first shot at working extracurricular activities before the regular officers getting their overtime, is that accurate or not? Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question on number fifty-two. Would the title of chief of police be changed to director of security? Does this mean he's going to put in a salary step as a, as a director?
No.
I believe there's no.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Reba.
Numbers fifty-one through fifty-nine, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on fifty-seven, fifty-eight, and I guess fifty-six then, too.
Ice habit, motion passes.
Facilities and capital projects, approve items sixty through sixty-six with one motion.
So move.
Second. Questions or comments?
Yes, on number sixty-two, I've got to see, is Mr. Marchase in the office, audience? There we go, very good. Is this an individual who's worked in this district? Good, excellent. And second thing is, when you have substitutes in the, now, when I have, when there's a substitute teacher in a building, the principal evaluates that teacher. Do you have a way of evaluating your substitutes?
During the head custodian, during the interviews, the head custodian and the principal end the interview.
Good, okay, good, that's just what I needed to know. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anything, anything else?
Also, on number sixty-five, are we still going to paint the roof? Paint, paint the greenhouse roof over, rather than pursuing this as maybe a way to get the garden club involved in our school district?
We're not painting class, we're just, that's just the move, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chapman, if I may, on number sixty-two, Mr. Marchase, and we've had many discussions this year about, I guess you might say, raising the bar with regard to expectations and the supervision of custodians in buildings by the head custodian. I know you were speaking just in terms of substitutes, but I thought you might find that to be, or the board in general is a point of interest as well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Reba.
Numbers sixty through sixty-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on sixty-three and sixty-four.
No on sixty-three and sixty-four.
Okay, and no on sixty-five, simply because I'm anxious to stimulate a little bit of discussion about how we might, once again, get our greenhouses working in this district. I think it has, it has, to throw them away strikes me as being a waste of a learning experience, so.
Motion passes, noting Mr. Benomo, Dr. Charles, and Mr. Early's no vote.
Finance, excuse me, finance, approve items sixty-seven through seventy-five with one motion.
So move.
Second. Questions or comments?
I've, and I'm sure this was in the lengthy email we got, Mr. Reba, but number sixty-eight, is the reason for the switch because this is cheaper?
The reason is, it's a little bit more expensive, a few hundred dollars, but the reason is, this coverage was with a separate company before, pretty much like a standalone. By moving it over to our right specialty insurance, it actually is covered then under our umbrella policy, which has a limit of ten million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Reba.
Numbers sixty-seven through seventy-five, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ice habit, motion passes.
Approving bills, number seventy-six.
We need a motion and then a second.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Questions or comments on the bills?
Yes, I have a few. Mr. Shemant, well, before we get to that, all right, we were promised in March that the stadium, locker room facility, the Title IX situation that we had, there would be complete guaranteed, was the word I think that was actually used during our committee meeting here, that it would be done by the time the team started in August, okay? And we were putting up two new flagpoles, if everybody remembers, at a substantial cost to us to put the flagpoles up, and said, we have seven months, don't worry, the flagpoles will be up. So now we're at the end of September, we have an immense hole in the back of the stadium, we have no concrete poured yet, correct, Mr. Shemansky? Still sitting there. We have a building we've paid for, sitting wait to be, being brought here. We've had home field hockey games and at least one home football game with no flagpoles because they tried to put them up the day of the event, as they waited all those months when the project was shut down with, once again, the dirt issue, never got done. I will not vote to pay any bill for anybody associated with the stadium project until it's done, because now we're into October, all right? These kids have gone a long time waiting for this to be completed. It doesn't take rocket science to get this done in a shorter period of time. We've already voted down some of these bills, but obviously, we just keep putting the bills back on the agenda until finally we vote yes, because we don't know what we're voting for, all right? And that's ridiculous to me. So, as of now, we're no further ahead than last month when we sat here, is that a fair assumption? Except for the flagpoles finally went up. Otherwise, we still have a hole in the ground, all right? Of which the city actually shut the project down for a week. Okay, thank you. Maybe someday we'll be able to get something right, well, I only have one more meeting. Hopefully, before then, something will go right.
Any other comments on the bills? Mr. Reba.
I'm going to take a roll call vote on the bills. Mr. Benomo.
No on J.
Mr. Chapman, I'm sorry, Dr. Charles.
I'll vote yes for all.
Mr. Early.
Yes.
Mr. John.
No on J.
Mr. Mahalik.
No on J.
Mr. O'Donnell.
No on D and no on J.
Mr. Wallace.
No on, the last three for D, no on I, and no on J.
Ms. Gianna.
No on D and I. The last three in D.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes on all.
And Mr. Early.
Yes on all.
I think J did not pass.
We'll try again next month on that one.
Let's have a special meeting.
I'm glad, you beat me to the punch, Mr. Mahalik, you were pretty quick there.
Mr. Wallace, you have two meetings left, not one.
I have one meeting left. Maybe.
Is there something, I don't know?
Superintendent, Superintendent Gianna, approve items seventy-seven through ninety with one motion.
So move.
Second.
Questions or comments, seventy-seven through ninety?
I'd just like to make a comment on number eighty. Last year in that building, I believe, and I know Mrs. Teeter's here, I believe we had fifty-three ESL students, roughly that number, with two teachers. This year, we added the seventh and eighth grade. That number is up to ninety, and our previous administrator cut one of those positions to one, where we now have one teacher trying to service roughly ninety students. How that position was ever cut in the first place is mind-boggling to me, all right? But it would be an absolute travesty if we didn't give them at least one more person there, that one teacher trying to deal with ninety is just impossible. It should have never been cut from the budget in the first place. Why it was, well, we can't ask for the justification of it, but this has to go through as far as I'm concerned.
Any other comments, questions?
I would like to thank Mrs. Teeter and her short tenure so far having an eagle eye on these types of things, Mr. Wallace, and the fact that mathematically, that just doesn't compute, and the fact that she's on it and noticed it and reacted to it is much appreciated.
Anything else?
Yeah, we certainly could have asked the question of that employee had we exercised our right to holding the employee for sixty days. We'd, right now, be able to ask that question, but nonetheless, thank you, Mrs. Teeter.
Any other comments? Mr. Reba.
Numbers seventy-seven through ninety, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on eighty-six.
Any other, no vote. Ice habit, motion passes.
Approve items ninety-one through ninety-six with one motion.
So move.
Need a second.
Second, but I would request one minute, since this is all new material added to our, may I request one minute that we can actually look over this and know what we're voting on?
Ninety-one through ninety-six, you're talking about, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
I have a question on number ninety-three, was this the person recommended by the committee?
Absolutely. Mr. Wallace, we, not only was that person recommended by the committee, that person was recommended unanimously. We interviewed six candidates, we boiled it down to two very, very good candidates. I called at least four references on those two top candidates, and it was a very difficult decision, but we, we had three of our Career Center teachers, we had both administrators at the Career Center and myself involved in the decision, and even though it was difficult, I'm convinced we have an outstanding candidate.
Good enough for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Butler, I'd like to ask you a question on ninety-three also. This person that's recommended, does he have the certification, does he have to take all the credits through Temple?
He is starting from ground zero, Mr. John, he must pass the OCA.
Okay, my other question is, the other candidate, did that candidate have those credentials?
The other candidate had passed the OCA and I believe had also acquired the VOC One, or was on the verge of acquiring the VOC One, and was eligible to continue from that spot moving forward.
So in other words, it's going to cast, cost us additional ten thousand dollars for certification, approximately?
I don't know the cost, but it will cost the district in terms of tuition reimbursement, that's correct.
And both these people were okay to be hired, correct?
Yes, I don't know how much detail you want, but we were concerned about one candidate relative to what has occurred in that person's past, relative to whether they, the longevity became an issue.
Anything else? Dr. Charles, did you have time to read them?
Absolutely, thank you very much.
No comment? Okay, Mr. Reba.
Numbers ninety-one through ninety-six, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No on ninety-three, because of the cost, additional cost, the only reason.
Ice habit, motion passes.
Anything else from up front, new business from the board first?
Yes, Mr. Chapman, as I sent to everybody an email today, I have a, and maybe I'm the only one who has it, we'll soon find out, I have a major concern with our lack of having an HR director. We've divided the job up, we've asked one poor person to try to do two full-time jobs at the same time, we have four or five people trying to take the position that was there and have them do all of that work, and I think a lot of times, the left hand's over here, the right hand's over here, and we don't have that unity that we had before. So at this time, and I would like to make a motion that we immediately start the process to replace the HR position as a full-time position as Mrs. McHale had.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second before we do any emails. Any public comment on that, since it's a new item? All right, then maybe we should do an individual roll call on this then.
Uh, if I could.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Wallace, I agree a hundred percent. I do have some concerns with some of the things we've done that, quite frankly, I don't know if we can undo at this point. So while I'm a hundred percent in favor, which is why I seconded this, I think there's, I don't want to say too much now, but I'm probably going to vote no so that we could have further discussions, but I a hundred percent agree with that position, which, as everybody up here knows, I spoke highly in favor of, you know, when we didn't fill that position last time. But I think there's some things that we need to figure out, what's staying where, et cetera, without getting into a whole lot of personnel discussions out in public, but I think it's something that by next month, we need to have back on this agenda and, and address it along with the other issues that have been done.
Mr. Early, I agree with you, in the executive session, I think, I think it was the eighth time in six years, I agreed with you.
It's getting to be too frequent.
Yeah, it's getting too often now, but number one, we took it out of the budget, it's not in the budget, is that correct, Mr. Reba? I think we said at the beginning of the year, if we ran into any situations like this, we'd address them after the first of the year, to see if we had the money to put this into play. I agree with you on this, Brian, absolutely I do.
Well, mine's not monetary, I think it's something we need to do by next month.
And I agree with you on that, but I also think everything we do is monetary anymore, to be honest with you. I know, if I ran a private business and I was doing it to be monetary with me and my business, and we're in business here, it has to be monetary to some extent. I'm not arguing with you, Brian, I'm agreeing with you, but I will vote no also on this until we get a clearer picture.
And my concern is, by the time January first rolls around, we're going to be in such a hole, we're not going to know how to get out of it, and we're going to be starting all over again, and it has nothing to do with the people doing it, but it's overwhelming to expect people to do multiple jobs when in the past, they, their job was a full-time job, and now we're saying, besides your full-time job, you're also going to do, going to do this, with, with added, onto that. Somewhere along the line, something's going to fall through the cracks. We've had numerous things fall through the cracks, we've only been here for two weeks. By January, it's not going to be my problem, you're going to have a mess on your hands, that's just my point.
And I agree, I think the financial end of it, an HR director's going to keep us out of a lot more trouble that's going to cost us a lot more money than just an HR director's salary.
We already, we already posted the job, we had applications put in, we already have a roster of people that we can take a look at to see if, if any of them fit our needs, if not, the job could be reposted, but I think, you know, the longer we go, and I know what's going to happen, some of these poor people who are trying to stay above float are going to be the scapegoats. But I think, you know, the longer we go, and I know what's going to happen, some of these poor people who are trying to, to stay above float are going to be the scapegoats, and it's not their fault.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just, I, I mean, I agree as well, but I, I want the position posted. I think enough time has gone by and, and there might be more interest and, and notice. Uh, I think it should be posted and a search should be conducted and not limited to just the, uh, the group of candidates from, uh, from a half year ago.
I agree.
Anyone else?
So would the job description then remain the same as it was when it was posted before?
I think Dr. Butler should look at that closely again, uh, and look at the, the structure of, of that department and see if he fills it, but, I mean, I think essentially the elements will be the same, yes. I believe, anyway.
Mr. Wallace, could you restate what your motion was?
My motion, well, do you want me to think I can remember that? That was off the top of my head. I didn't write anything down. It, it would be to, uh, uh, immediately, uh, start the process to replace the HR position previously held by Mrs. McHale. I guess that's the best way to put it. Same job description. We don't have to reinvent the wheel here, all right? And put somebody into that position, whether we want to repost it, whether we wa- which, and I disagree with Bobby on this, I think we had the applicants, our plan was the, to replace the person in the summer time of the year, and we hadn't done that, and I don't know. That's just the way I look at it, you know? The longer we go, it's the, the more we, we, uh...
All right, we already have a motion and a second plus comment, so, Mr. Reba, you want to do the vote now unless anybody has anything else to say? Mr. Reba? There was no public comment on this.
You did ask for it, there was. Mr. Benomo.
Yes.
Dr. Childs.
In favor of Mr. Wallace's motion, yes.
Mr. Early.
I am going to vote yes because it's to move the process forward, not necessarily to hire somebody.
Mr. John. Mr. Mahalik.
Uh, yes, and again, I, I would like to state, I am hoping that it's a full, uh, full-blown, uh, process with this, and we're, we're going to offer this in some manner to the community, uh, on our website and make people aware of it.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
Ms. Yanek.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. John.
Well, since we're all getting along so well tonight, yes.
Chapman.
Maybe I should vote no just to change that, but, uh, based on what, uh, Brian said, I, I agree with him to move the process, process along. I'm a yes tonight.
Motion passes.
Any other, uh, new business from the board up here?
Yes, did we need a motion with regards to West Hazeltons? Uh, Mr. Denotti? West Hazeltons, uh, request to wear a separate shirt. I, did that? Yeah. Do we need, do we need any kind of a motion on that at this point? Okay, um, I would. As, as far as motions are concerned.
So just a point of clarification, are we going to post the HR position or go off the candidates that we have?
Post it.
Post it?
I'm for posting.
As long as it's done ASAP.
How many days do we have to post it, Mr. Reba?
Five.
I believe ten.
Ten's fair. I, I would like us to be able to contact the people who applied prior to this to see if they still have an interest in it, so they don't have to reapply a second time.
Sure.
I'll take the lead on it.
Ten days, if we can post it by Monday.
We'll, we'll get to work on that right away.
All right, if there's nothing else from up here, how about from the audience on non?
I'm sorry. Okay, if I may, uh, two, two things. When I, when we look at the PSSA scores from last year, they're not very good. Okay, uh, that's been a, a trend which has kind of been going down, and we obviously hope to reverse that as time goes. I would like very, very much that the administration take a close look at what happened, why it happened, what, what can be done, and then bring that to the board, back to the board's attention if you would. What, what do you see as being the solution to this? You know, a- and again, with, with an eye toward budgetary constraints, I certainly realize that, as Mr. John just emphasized to us.
Dr. Childs, we'll have a report ready for you in October. I will just quickly comment that the, both of the PSA, PSSA, excuse me, uh, tests changed considerably. I particularly math, but also ELA in the, in terms of, it's, it's all-in-one test now. Uh, we, we believe collectively, I hope I'm speaking on behalf of the professional educators in the room, that we're setting a new baseline. Many people in the field, in the state feel that way relative to, okay, the test has been changed, it was substantial, substantial. So we're setting a new baseline and we're going to move forward from there, but we'll incorp- incorporate that in the report.
And, and doctor, I think if you look statewide, the districts who will come from the same socioeconomic backgrounds that we have, all of them face the exact same problem. I don't think you're going to find one district that succeeded at that level. It, it appears that the, the tests are more, uh, geared for certain, uh, socioeconomic backgrounds, I would say, than others, that they're not really fair. If it's one school that this is happening to, that's one thing, or one district, this is happening across the state, in districts that are similar to us. Okay, you can't take us and compare us to, uh, Hapehorsham, but you can take us and compare us to, to districts that fit into that same category. And I think from what I've read, the pattern is substantially the same throughout the entire state of Pennsylvania.
Right, again, when I was...
Maybe it's the test.
Yeah, what I was going af- after, uh, uh, Mr. Wallace was, was, um, no blame to be cast anywhere, and not really comparisons at this point in time either. What I'm looking at is, what is it we can do with our students that's going to give them the best chance of being able to do well next year?
Well, I'd love for the people who made up the test to come in and tell us what it is we should be doing, because they must have all the answers. And you, and you never see anything coming from them, uh, how the test is developed, as who determines what we should know at what point and how it should be. It's, it's mind-boggling that arbitrarily, this can come out and say, here you go, now do it, you're on your own. When we can't even get a budget passed to start paying the bills, when some districts are on the verge of shutting down already, they're going to dictate to us, let's worry about the test scores. You can't have it both ways.
But again, I, I don't have any problem with somebody coming in from this, from the state and saying, here's what we would suggest that needs to be done. But I, but again...
Wouldn't it be nice if the state actually listened to us?
But again, what I'm looking for is not a comparison with other districts. I'm looking for what we, as a, as a district, can do for our students. And to give them the, the, um, uh, opportunity to be able to compete, the competitive, uh, the competitive edge that we, we should be giving to our, to our students.
Dr. Childs, I think we've been doing that for the last, I don't know how long we've been given the PSSA test, but ever since they've started, we've been, every year, trying to come up with ways of improving our scores.
Right.
But Mr. Wallace is right. It's not a fair test, and it never has been.
And it, and it's, it's mind-boggling to me, if you're in the Department of Education in Pennsylvania, and you see so many districts struggling with this test, that you haven't organized a group to go out to talk to these districts to say, here's what, you know, here's what's working other places. Well, I don't think it's working in districts similar to ours. I bet you if we took a consortium of districts like us and sat down, everybody has the same problem, and nobody has figured it out. And the fact that you don't get any assistance, or have anybody come in and say, you know, yeah, here's your weakness, no kidding, we can figure that out, but how do you correct it? And how come then these other school districts aren't able to correct it? Maybe you should be corrected. I'm done, I'm sorry.
With that, am I, Mr. Chapman? We are in this, in the spirit of continuous improvement. Uh, we have, we, I don't know if you've heard, but I'll share with you that we've completely revamped our Act Eighty Days to meet the needs of our professionals, to meet the needs of our teachers. And we're excited, I personally am very excited about the change. I believe that, uh, it will help move us forward. We're going to be talking about instruction, curriculum, teaching and learning, instructional strategies. And, and our colleagues will have an opportunity to collaborate with each other, which they have not had the opportunity to do uh, without being in a rushed situation or having a hundred other things on their minds. So we're moving in that direction. This will give us an opportunity to share with the board district goals, where we're, where we're heading, what are priorities. I, I appreciate the challenge, and we'll bring forward some information next month.
And the second, while we're, while we're on the subject here, the school board has actually two jobs. Number one is to look at, at policies and make decisions about spending the money. Okay, the, um, when it comes to the monetary end, I did contact Governor Wolf's office, have not got, I got the name of a, of a, um, uh, a, a person who helps with the scheduling there. Uh, and I would ask Governor Wolf to come and spend some time, some evening over the next six or eight weeks, when he's up in northeast Pennsylvania, spend a couple of hours with the people of this community, talking essentially about, okay, given the, the, the boondoggle we have with property taxes, given the difficulties we have trying to cover the PISers assessments from the state, what, where do we as a district go in terms of, of, of refining programs, eliminating programs, dealing with the monetary consequences of what the legislature and what the gov- central government is doing?
I have a question I'd like to ask him. Since, since none of the districts are getting any money for education and the budget's at a standstill, are the legislators still getting paid?
Oh, yeah, they are.
That, because I noticed an article the other day where there wasn't even a roll call taken, they took a picture so they could see who was there to decide who's getting paid. So, listen, they're not suffering at all. Doesn't matter to them. They still get their check.
Well, again, the, the...
That's ridiculous.
The goal here that I have, Mr. Wallace, is to try to get him to talk about the long-term consequences of this, as opposed to, you know, the, the budgetary thing is going to go back and forth behind closed doors for the next couple of months, and then they'll come up with something, I think, I hope. Uh, what I'm looking more for is the longer-term philosophical thing and, and what it, what it does to us from a practical point of view as a community. Essentially, a town hall meeting is what I'm looking for, and to discuss those two issues. Uh, so the, the offer's been made, and the, the local state senators and reps have talked to a couple, and they said they will be glad to make it, and so we'll do what we can do.
Dr. Childs, I would be afraid that Governor Wolf would come here, and it would sound more like a campaign speech than anything else. I'm sure he would bring up his stances that have been, uh, about taxing the gas industries and things like that. I'm sure he would bring that up again. And, I mean, that's been shot down by both parties. It's been a bipartisan shoot-down of, of that proposal, so I'm just afraid that that would be what it would be.
But again, what we're not...
When you have more legislators involved, lo- local legislators, I think maybe then we could have some sort of spirited discussion.
Right, well, that's exactly what I'm aiming for, but also the school administration has to come forth and say, here's what our budgetary problems are. But what I'm looking for from the audience is question and answers.
Yeah.
That's where, that's where the action is. What do our people see? What do they see as happening to us? What happens to our school district? What happens to our education programs? Where's it going to come from? And that's, that's, that's the, that's what I wrote into the letter that I sent to his scheduling people.
Dr. Childs, not being pessimistic, but we had, we passed a hundred, roughly a hundred and forty million dollar budget. And that night, we had one question, and it was Mrs. Todd was discussing the, uh, security, the black and the navy blue pants. On a hundred and forty million dollar budget, we didn't have one question.
Dr. Butler, I know you like challenges.
Thank you, Mr. Yanek.
So I'm going to give you a challenge. Because one of the things that always, always bothered me was the Department of Education. I would like to know if you could find out how many people in the Department of Education actually worked in a public school? The number. I really would like to know that. So that's a challenge that I don't think you're going to be able to handle.
I, I will delegate this to Mr. Denotti.
And I know he can handle it.
Yes, I've, I've seen him investigate the numbers.
Congratulations. Anybody have any other comments?
Was he serious about that, you know?
Absolutely.
He can't kick me in the foot because I'm not next to him, so I don't know.
Mr. Chapman, I do have one. Uh, Dr. Childs, you had brought up about the different programs, um, that go on in the Academy of Sciences, you know, and how every month there's different programs going on in that school. I mean, maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's because of the leadership in that building, and the teachers are going out and finding these programs, tying them in with the curriculum that they're teaching. So I think it's a testament to the teachers in that building, and the administration in that building for doing it. Maybe that could be a model that's used in other buildings, you know, throughout the district. I know Domestic Violence Service Center, because of my involvement with United Way, I've been up there, I've toured their facility. Lot of times, they would be more than happy to come down and talk to, you know, any of our, not just our students, but also our staff.
And again, Mr. Early, I, I hope that I didn't, um, I, I may, may, I may not have made myself clear once again. Uh, I, I absolutely compliment the staff. What I'm, what I'm attempting to do is to throw out the challenge, because the, the, all the students at the high school level need these same components that the STEM school is getting. And the challenge is to the teachers, to the students, to the administrators throughout the district to begin to come up with programs that are of similar excellence to the ones that the STEM school is showing us month after month.
I agree.
Anything else? Mr. Wallace, anything else?
I did, but I, I can wait.
Okay, thank you. Anything, anything from the audience on non-agenda items?
Mike, excuse me, feel free to use the microphone. You're a good speaker, we know, but we want to...
Okay. So, well, I'll start from the beginning?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Geisic from the Hazelton Area Academy of Sciences. I am a senior this year. And, uh, right now, I'd like to thank the board for approving Agenda Item Number Seventeen, because I am actually a living participant of that program. I was a peer tutor under Mrs. Hopkins' program for junior year, sophomore year, and for those two years, I have had the opportunity to tutor my peers and learn so much, not just like from me teaching them, but actually from them teaching me. I had the opportunity to tutor a freshman last year, her name was Sarah. She was a really small girl. But, uh, she was failing biology, uh, pretty badly, actually. She was down to sixty, so... I was able to stay after school, uh, every Wednesday and Friday. And we worked on all these problems for hours. And eventually, you know, it paid off, because towards the end of the quarter, towards the, uh, end of the semester and the end of the school year, she passed biology with a high B, with eighty-five to ninety. And this program wasn't hard to implement. It was actually very easy and very simple. It's upperclassmen tutoring lowerclassmen. And Mrs. Hopkins does a great job every day of monitoring that. She does a great job of putting everything together. We see her working in her office until long past the time is due. She's there at four forty, sometimes even at six o'clock at night when I'm there with her, and we're still, uh, working on college transcripts. Right now, even with, uh, two guidance counselors at the school, she still takes care of me, even though she's not the senior guidance counselor, you know, for, uh, what I would be. And I just cannot speak highly enough of her. And she is truly irreplaceable to the STEM school, and without her guidance, you know, we wouldn't be where we are. Same thing with Mrs. Ernst. Without an administrator like her being so supportive of Mrs. Hopkins and all of our programs, we wouldn't be where we are. So that's what I would like to say, and thank you.
Michael, I really hope you're going into education, but I know it's not a chance.
Thank you, Michael.
And Mike, I want to thank you for the letter you sent me. I'll be sharing a copy of that with the board. And furthermore, if you're tutoring on Friday, I hope you're getting time and a half after school.
Hello, um, my name is Lewis, and I'm a junior at the STEM school. And I wanted to start by saying that, uh, people would not imagine, um, what the STEM school has done for me. Um, I came here to United States from the Dominican, um, from the Dominican Republic, um, with no English, and, um, in eighth grade at high status. And I went to the ninth grade center, um, not being able to hold a conversation with my classmates. And, and so the, um, and afraid of speaking in English. And, and so the second semester, when I moved to the STEM school, um, and the way the things are done in the school, the atmosphere, and how just things work, um, made me, um, have to work hard to, um, improve myself and to learn the language. And so I owe a lot to the, to the school, um, because, um, without it, I would not be able to even communicate what I think, what I feel. And, um, but most important, um, I have to thanks, um, Mrs. Ernst and the staff of the school, because without them, um, the school would not be a thing, and because they gave me the opportunity to become a better student academically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Lewis, education maybe? Maybe education, bilingual? I'm trying here. Good. I have a lot of ailments. I have a lot of ailments.
That shirt is one of them, Mr. Wallace.
Okay?
Good evening, my name is Katrina Brandmeyer, I'm also a senior at the Academy of Sciences. I just want to say that at last month's board meeting, Dr. Childs did make a comment that went something like, I feel if the STEM school actually needs two guidance counselors, we're admitting the wrong type of students into the academy. I shared this comment with my peers and found everyone to be quite offended by it, and I do thank you for your apology. I do not want to speak on behalf of the academy, but I am confused about how having two guidance counselors relates at all to the type of students we're admitting into the school. There are times when everyone needs help, okay? Tenth grade, we only had Mrs. Hopkins, she was very, very busy, making it difficult for her to help everyone who needed help in one day. The following year, a part-time counselor was assigned to the academy, so that year, we had Mrs. Hopkins full-time, and we had Mrs. Terz part-time. Mrs. Hopkins was still the counselor for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students, they're the students with the greatest needs. So, she was still very busy, she was still my counselor at the time, and it was still very hard to get in her office. I will say that anytime I needed anything, both Mrs. Hopkins and Mrs. Terz were both there for me. It was then decided that one and one part-time guidance counselor were still not enough, so Mrs. Terz was assigned to the academy full-time. I thought that this was great, and I just don't understand why you would give us something if you want to take it away, or have an intention of taking it away. The STEM school has lost a number of beloved faculty members this year, and I think that removing a counselor, even part-time, from the academy, wouldn't help all eight middle school counselors with their large case loads. In addition, most middle schools have other services available to the students, such as part-time social workers and northeast counseling staff who's there to assist the students on-site. As a student at the academy, I have built a relationship with both of these counselors. I can't thank them enough for everything they've done for me. Mrs. Hopkins might not be the senior counselor this year, but she's always there for me, and I don't think the school would be the same without her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. May I respond for a moment? If I may respond, what I would like to, what I'd like to, Ms. Brandmeyer, I've known you a long time, and I certainly respect you as a student, and your goal toward an ideal is correct, no question about it. Current recommendations, and Mrs. Plunus is here, she can correct me, but I think the current recommendations are that there should be essentially one guidance counselor for every 450 students, or something like that. In our district, we have 11,000 students, I think 11,005 as of this evening, okay? And we have about 15 guidance counselors. You're at the STEM school, so you can do the math very easily, we'd have come nowhere close to what's necessary. The question is, who gets deprived? Okay, at two guidance counselors for 500 students, that's one for every 250 students. And again, this is a budgetary thing, it's not an ideal we're aiming for, and I didn't mean to in any way impugn the goals, the ideals that you're looking for, in no way, and not anything from the STEM school either. I have all the respect in the world for the guidance counselors and what they do for you, but I also look at a guidance counselor at Heights Terrace last year who had six attempted suicides, she had six family, six parents die from students in her school, she had 60 students for the care team, she had first, second, kindergarten, first, second grades for whom she had the plan, had developed care plans for every one of the students in those three grades, or every one of the students had any kind of a problem. I don't think I need to say anymore, I think you can understand where I'm coming from.
Good evening, my name is Anna Rolz Deroz, and I am the guidance counselor at Heights Terrace School, and I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I am here requesting assistance in the guidance office, and I think I know you do a wonderful job at the STEM school, me being here has nothing to do with, you know, any other counselor or anything like that. I believe that one person serving a diverse population of extreme need with a ratio of 1,100 students to one guidance counselor is not adequate and is concerning. The state average ratio of guidance counselors to students is 386 to one, and the ethical guideline is 250 to one by the American School Counselors Association. At Heights Terrace, we're four times over that amount. And my main concern as well for the students, last year, Dr. Childs, close, we had 61 students referred to our SAP team, which are cases of the most serious nature, with 12 of those cases suicide risks, six family members lost, a mother or a father, young children witnessing violent crimes, many other cases of very serious children and youth issues. A lot of time and resources are needed to intervene and stay on top of these situations. It's difficult for students to perform academically if there are serious barriers to learning. Imagine being six, and the last memory of your mother is watching her die of a drug overdose, or suddenly you losing a parent, and being raised by your sibling who has several other children of her own to take care of, and her siblings. Also, since our district did away with IST, all the IST personnel, we have been short one full-time person, and a lot of the paperwork for child study has fallen on the teachers and the guidance counselor, and we had roughly 60 cases last year. Oftentimes disadvantaged, looks like a disability, so many of our students are referred a lot of the time. Mrs. Olander came to Heights Terrace a few times a month, who helped tremendously during the observations, she is no longer employed by the school district. If I can't get to all of these cases, the students get short-changed academically, and that results in lower test scores. Plus, it is less time that I get to spend with the more serious issues and the personal and the daily crises that go on. So much of my time is spent on secretarial duties, and I can go on a laundry list of secretarial duties, I'm not going to bore you with all that. Then we have, in the spring, we have our course selection of PSSAs, which is an enormous undertaking, especially for a building with students withdrawing and reregistering throughout the entire school year, and throughout the PSSAs, and crises happen throughout that time. In closing, I just ask that, I just want to say, the students at Heights Terrace... (bell dings) Oh, okay. The students at Heights Terrace matter, and I'm just asking that you do the right thing and get us some assistance in the guidance office, because I don't feel we're serving this population as we show.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chapman, I will soon be submitting a short report to the board with regard to counselor appropriation in our schools, and having some feedback from counselors K through 12, I would hope we could discuss that as soon as possible with the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Any other public comment on non-agenda items from the audience? Okay, I need a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Meeting adjourned.